Good evening. If you're here to speak at public comment and you have not registered, if you'll meet me up front here, I can get you registered. Thanks.
No.
I know, right? Yes, that's right.
How are you? Just here to make sure we stay online tonight. I respect. Hey, there you go. Wait up for about 10 minutes. Well, good to see you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll get ready to start our city, Bloomington City Council meeting this evening, and we'll wait for just a minute to make sure we're online before we get started. Okay, we are. And at this point, if we're going to call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Ma'am Clerk, if you'd call, roll, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Strazza?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Brady?
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to recognition or appointments. And I think we have some recent appointments to boards that we would like to make acknowledgement to and thank. First off, our Connect Transit Board appointment recently is Tyler Cravens. I think Tyler's with us this evening. Tyler, stand up so people can see Tyler Cravens and congratulate you. Also, a recent, a recent appointment to the Cultural Commission, Ricardo Arado, and I don't know if Ricardo's with us this evening. I don't think so. Any other recent appointments we need to acknowledge? Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you once again, both for their service. Planning? Oh, we have. Thank you. We also have John Pryor. John and his wife Carol, I think, is accompanying him tonight. John is a recent appointment to the Planning Commission. John, thank you very much for your service. Once again, thanks to all. Next, we're going to move to public comment. Ours, is there any individual that's scheduled for public comment tonight to the council?
We received no emailed public comment, but we do have one person registered to speak, and that is Kathleen Hayes.
Kathleen's with us? Oh, okay. If you'd like to come to the microphone, wait a minute, you know, go ahead and see if we, are you representing someone that registered as that we said?
The RASK, Recovery Oriented Systems of Care.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, actually, you can't give your time to somebody else to speak under public comment. We could allow, if the board wanted to allow her to register to speak on her behalf, but you, that time limit ended at five minutes to the meeting's time.
I'll move that she be reg, allowed to register.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Dannenberger in initial.
I'll call a quick vote.
For Scott, yes.
Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley? Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder that to our speakers, that public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their view and feedback to the city council. It's also an opportunity for the council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all viewers, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers who do not will have their time rescinded from them. So if you'd go ahead and please proceed for three minutes.
Yes. I am with the RASK, which is the Recovery Oriented Systems of Care of McLean County. We are a council of social, social agencies and community members aiding in the support of recovery, both in mental health and substance use. We are doing a survey. It's a community assessment survey, and this survey can be taken by anyone in the community, and it is to inform us of services that are needed for mental health and recovery services. So we have copies here. We can hand them out. You know, I don't know what the process is for that, but we can, we just want to let you guys know and pass them out as well here. And that would be all.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
For the record, really quickly, can I get your name?
Sorry, ma'am.
Sorry, I just need, also need your name, but we can continue.
Yes, my name is Cindy Alcazar.
Cindy Alcazar.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there any other speakers?
There's no further public comment.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to item seven, which is the Consent Agenda. Are there any members of the council that have items under the consent agenda that wish to be polled?
Mayor, yes, under the manager's provision in the code, would like to remove item E from the consent agenda.
Okay. Are there any other members of council that would like an item removed?
Yes, I would like to remove item P.
Item, P, did you say?
P.
Reminding, okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Any other members with items that need to be removed? All right. If not?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this. I asked that this item be removed. Steph has been looking at some other options related to this, and we believe that it may be premature to move forward with this contract. We may bring it back in a few months, once it gets a little warmer with the recent cooling down. We would ask that we not move forward with this agreement at this time. So if there's no motion, then this item will die, and we will just bring this item back or a related contract back in the, at a future time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And are there questions from members of the council to city managers? Remember Motney, no? If no, then we need to take a vote.
So we, yeah, we just, we need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7E and 7P.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda except for 7E and 7P.
Seconded?
Second.
By Member Scott. Take the vote.
And the motion passes. No nays to announce?
Okay. Are there other questions regarding items? Remember Motney?
Yes, regarding 7P, I had a few questions that needed clarification, but in researching those, I learned that it's within the purview of the Liquor Commission to actually address those questions in a public hearing. So I'm just asking for the opportunity to remand that over or move that back to the Liquor Commission to provide clarification on those items.
Okay. Are there, any other members have discussion, questions?
I just have a question. What, what impact does that have on the business?
My understanding would, as a Liquor Commissioner, it would delay for, until our next meeting, which is Wednesday of this week, that we hopefully can answer, get the questions answered before then, and then we would have to probably post again the item for action.
Yeah, so the agenda for, that's taking up on Wednesday, has already been posted and noticed, so we would take it up in December, if that's what the action is. In terms of delay of business, I imagine there would be an impact to the business, but they are currently operating still as crafted under the current ownership. It would just be, this is a new creation and that other license, it's kind of like when one's approved and the other goes away, that kind of thing. So the business itself would be able, under the current ownership, still be operating.
Does that help answer your question on, on the timing? Remember Ward?
I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm just a little concerned because it seems like this business, and I don't know anything about this business, so I'm not trying to speak one way or another on that, but it seems like they've gone through a process and been approved or recommended by the Liquor Commission, and now we're, we're going to put them off until the new year, and it would, I could imagine that the holiday season could be a time where a lot of people would be going out, and this could have an impact on them, but I don't know. So I just want to lift that up.
Well, I'm not sure that it is appropriate for me to share the nature of the concerns because it is within the purview of the Liquor Commission. That's why I'm asking that it go back to the Liquor Commission.
Remember Motney, do you wish to make a motion in which to do that and then have a vote? That's the only way we're going to resolve it at tonight's meeting, is, would be my understanding.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I have a, I have you making a motion to remand it back to the Liquor Commission. I just don't have a second yet.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, to remand to the Liquor Commission for additional hearing, to reopen the hearing.
And for the question, and we can't talk about why? Is that right?
So when, may I, Your Honor, so when the issue comes before this panel to pass or deny the liquor license, your deliberations are limited to the facts that are found at the Liquor Commission hearing. You're, you're not able to hear new facts. So it's not appropriate to have a discussion about those facts here. The point is, I think, you know, with some minimal explanation, to send it back to the Liquor Commission for additional factual finding at the hearing. So to reopen the hearing and have additional facts there. There's nothing wrong with a generalization, but you don't want to get into the specific facts of what might change the, the outcome. That's for the Liquor Commission to decide.
Can I answer your question?
Almost. I, I don't have a lot of details here. If, if there is a situation that something is found later and gets brought up, then can a, can a liquor license be revoked?
Yes.
Let me just be clear. This isn't a question prospective on my count. This is a question relating to history. So if that's helpful, I'm like, I'm not anticipating something new arising outside of what needs to be evaluated with the questions that I have.
So, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I, I understand what you're saying. We can't discuss. I might have a hard time supporting a motion not knowing any context beyond what they're asking us to support. And so for me to support the motion to send it back, I'm, I'm just, I'm going to struggle unless we can have a little bit of context as to the why, which I think you just said that we can't.
Not saying that there's no discussion why. It's just staying away from fact. So for instance, I'm aware of, they, they did X back in 2012. That's, that's a fact that probably shouldn't be considered unless it came up through the Liquor Commission. If you have concerns about some of the background information that were contained in the, in the application, and, and I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility, so a discussion like that would say, well, I've got some concerns about some of the things that are in the background information that I think need to be further explored. Something like that is okay.
Yep. Anybody else? Remember Motney, in, in general terms, sending back to the Liquor Commission, is there in generality, something you'd like to see the Liquor Commission look at?
Well, I'm going to ask our city attorney to make sure that I'm being appropriate and complying with our procedural rules. This came to my attention through review of the application and then some follow-up discussions after that. So, you know, they are of a compliance nature, I think, if that's appropriate to share with, within the last 12 months. So thank you.
Thank you. So with that, there's a motion on the floor by Member Motney. Is there a second to that motion by a member of council?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Lee? Ma'am Clerk, if you'll take the role.
And the motion failed. And if I could call the nays, Councilmember Kearns, Councilmember Dannenberger, Councilmember Strazza, Councilmember Ward, and Councilmember Scott. And just for the record, Councilmember Mosley abstained.
Okay. So the motion failed? Is there any other motions that wants to be, any other member wants to bring a motion forward on the issue? Remember Scott?
So am I correct, then, that the next step would be to move to accept this, and then later if we find concerns or all that kind of stuff, then we, we bring those up to the city, to Liquor Commission, to et cetera?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Just as a point of clarification, would that allow procedurally issues that should have been within the purview of the Liquor Commission to be brought back before us?
I'm not sure I understand the question. So at this point, if you were to vote to, in favor of awarding a license, and let's say that there was additional information that was later determined that was false or misleading or whatever, then that, that could be investigated, brought to the Liquor Commission, and then they would have a proceeding on whether or not to revoke the license. That if, that would be the appropriate procedure for that. Help?
And that is accurate even when these issues are a part of the current application, including the application itself?
Well, you can vote based on the information that's contained in the packet and the factual, the hearing that was conducted and the transcript or the minutes from the hearing. It's okay to consider all of those things. It's not okay to consider facts that are outside the application or outside the hearing process.
In that case, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept item P, recognizing that if there's other information that comes to light that needs to be brought up, that we do so.
There's a motion on the floor by, for Scott, going to be seconded by a member Ward, and Ma'am Clerk, would you call the roll?
The item passes. There are two nays to announce. Councilmember Motney and Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. That will conclude then the consent agenda side of things, if I'm correct, and we'll now move to our regular agenda. And our city manager, Mr. Jurgens, will introduce the first item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, after months and months of work, and I want to recognize the hard work of the finance staff as well as many other staff throughout the city that work on putting the audit together every year, just want to share my appreciation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Rathman, our Finance Director, to help walk us through a positive audit.
Yes. Thank you, City Manager Jurgens, Mayor Council. Tonight, we'll be discussing the results of the audit, not a detailed review of all the numbers, et cetera. It literally is a six-month process. It begins in May. It was finalized on October 28th. I don't know if you could hear like a little shift in the force with the finance department going, yay, you know, and, and doing the, the wave. There's a lot of coordination related to separate audits. There's public safety pension fund audits that need to be coordinated and, and rolled into our own audit, actuarial reviews, et cetera. As the city manager mentioned, it's a heavy impact on the finance and HR department. A team effort led by our Assistant Finance Director, Patty Lynn Silva. So I just, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, all the, all the departments. A job well done, and a review that you'll hear about here in a moment, well done as well. Next slide, please. I want to remind the community and council that all the audits going back to 1988 are online under government transparency or the finance page of the, of the website. And next slide, please. Without further ado, hopefully, I want to introduce Michael Malott, who's a CPA and a principal with Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly is an international firm. This is actually the 10th audit they've, they've performed for us. There's benefits to that. Obviously, they kind of know the ins and outs and what to look for in the city. We have a lot of nuances related to the arena, BCPA, things of that nature. Baker Tilly has over 3,500 state and local government clients. They have a special, a unit that specializes in, in. They have a special, a unit that specializes in state and local governments. And we're really grateful of that relationship that we have with them. They not only perform our audit, but we turn to them to bounce as a sounding board and for their expertise and other technical issues that we may encounter. So without further ado, hopefully, I'll introduce Mr. Michael Malott, Principal with Baker Tilly. Thanks.
And sorry for the coughing fit there. I lost my voice this weekend, so it means I'll be quick. So first, before I get started, I do want to reiterate thanks to Scott and Patty Lynn and their team, and really a number of different people throughout the city. As you mentioned, it's a very long process. This is the easy part at the end to tell you how everything went. We really start this process back in March, you know, April. They're really getting things rolling, and we're here today in November. So without a lot of effort and work and diligence and responsiveness by primarily your finance team, but a lot of other people throughout the organization, we aren't able to be here and issue these reports on time with all the statutory requirements. So again, it's a testament to the operation you have behind the scenes, making sure everything gets done. Without that, we wouldn't be here today. So again, thank you. So as Scott said, I'm not gonna go into really too many in degree details, but overall, I'm gonna walk through each of the different reports that we issue as part of the audit process, what it means, and kind of go through kind of the whole gamut. There's more than just one set of statements you get issued, a lot of different things we have to do, and a lot of different requirements have to be met on the process. The first report, the big base, is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That report represents the city's entire financial picture for fiscal year '25 as of April 30th and throughout the fiscal year. So that tells you kind of what happened. It includes a lot of different components, including some components audited by other firms. So we do place reliance upon the work done by another firm, primarily for your police pension fund. There are other reports to talk a little bit about here. They kind of get integrated into that report as well to give you kind of the full umbrella of the city of Bloomington and kind of where you are financially. In the end, while we help the city put that information into kind of the proper context in accordance with all the accounting standards and all that good stuff, ultimately, it's your information. It's your numbers, your results. It's you putting out to the public, here's what happened during the year for the city of Bloomington financially. The only thing that comes from Austin, our voice, is the auditors in that report, is the independent auditor's report. And that was three pages, is us telling the users that, yes, you can rely upon this information. The opinion we issued is called unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance we can provide as part of the audit process. What that means is not that we look at every single penny or every dollar, but it means that the information in there can be relied upon and is representative of the city's financial health. That if there's anything that is slightly off, which we do communicate, there are things slightly off that we don't feel need to be changed, that it wouldn't impact the understanding of where the city sits financially. So that's kind of the goal, sir. That's the pat on the back. That's what says, job well done, audit accomplished, your numbers are accurate and reliable and can be used by you as city council to make decisions, as well as any other users of the financial statements to make decisions and understand what happened during the year. If you're gonna read any sections of report, I kind of say it every year, but read the Management Discussion and Analysis section and the Transmit Letter. Those are two kind of big bang for your buck sections, the summary, the highlights. M D N A, which is what we call it for simplicity, is kind of the numbers, nuts and bolts. Here's what changed significantly from prior years, whereas the Transmit Letter gives you context of what happened. So what kind of economic development, kind of initiatives, what kind of things like that have taken place during the year or are on the horizon? The two of those together paint a really good picture of the big things going on in the city. The only thing I point out from a numbers perspective, I just point out the pension funded status. They're relatively stable this year. The IMRF Fund, which is for municipal employees, so slight decrease in its overall funded status. It's still in the 90s, still in great shape, but a slight decrease, whereas your police and fire pensions saw about a 3% increase each in their funded set. What that means in a dollar and cents standpoint is means the better funded those plans are, the less you have to contribute per dollar on the annual basis. So going forward, as you see those percentages of funded status rise, as they have for a while now, that's gonna mean the city has to contribute less on a go-forward basis to maintain those levels in the funding going forward. So it's always good to look at those numbers. There are schedules in the back that give you a 10-year trend analysis that kind of see where they worked, where they are. It's always good to keep an eye on, you know, because that does impact what you need to spend on in the future periods. Additionally, overall, the city had a strong financial year. You know, overall, you'll see there is on the governmental side, a fund deficit, but that's due to the fact that you had some strategic spending in capital. Without that spend, you'd have had a surplus during the year. So just be cognizant of that. You might see some negative numbers, but that was strategic and in line with budget and planned. And that's a use of existing dollars to support infrastructure projects. So nothing unanticipated on a true operating standpoint without those capital work. It's still a strong performing year despite the fact that revenues have declined throughout the state of Illinois through the year. So it's a continuing thing of strong fiscal responsibility for the city. So in terms of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, that's kind of the big picture. There's a ton of information in there. If you have any questions on that, please let me know. But there are a lot of other reports we issue. So there is a separate report we issue for the Foreign Fire Insurance Board. That is integrated into the city's report, but does have its own standalone report. And we do do a deep dive specifically on those dollars and how they're spent. And we can issue a clean opinion on that. Further, we do some work around compliance with TIF laws and standards for your two TIFs, Empire and East Washington. We're able to issue a clean opinion on that with no findings. That means you've spent TIF dollars appropriately in accordance with state statutes, as well as meeting all number of other state compliance requirements for maintaining a TIF on an annual basis. Some other reports we issue, the state has two primary statutory requirements. One is your Illinois Comptroller's Annual Financial Report. That's something we compile on your behalf and submit. It's just a regurgitation of your financial information into the state's prescribed format. Excuse me, every governmental entity is required to do that. So that's something we kind of check the box for you guys and make sure it's taken care of. Additionally, the Government Accountability and Transparency Unit requires the submission of what's called a cipher, Consolidated Year-end Financial Report. It's just another way to slice and dice your numbers in another different format again, but we are required to issue an opinion on that for the city to submit. And we were able to issue a clean opinion on that, and it was submitted timely with the state. The last kind of deliverable report we issue as part of the audit is the Single Audit, which is our deep dive into your federal compliance and your spending for this year. It's kind of the last go-around on your ARPA dollars. It's the final year of spending on that. It represented about 5.2 million of the 6.2 million total spend for the year. We look at not only what you spend it on, but making sure that you are in compliance with the myriad of other requirements the federal government places on those awards. Not only were you compliant in the current year, but do you have an infrastructure and control and system in place to ensure you remain compliant in the future with your grant spending? And we're able to issue that with a clean opinion as well. So that kind of concludes the different deliverables. There is one other report we issue, is the Audit Results Letter. That's our letter from us as the auditor to you as the governing body. Includes a bunch of different things we have to communicate every year. I think I tell you guys this every year, boring is good. That means things went well. That letter is designed to tell you anything bad that happened. So as long as it's boring and you see nothing juicy or surprising in there, that's a job well done. It's not designed to give you credit or kudos. That's kind of what the opinion is itself, is to say, hey, great job. Although it doesn't necessarily read that way, that's what it should be intended to do. This letter is to tell you if anything of concern or worry. The good news is the report that there was nothing of concern or worry. The process went well. We identified nothing unintended or changes to our audit plan or any major concerns such as fraud or lack of information or difficulties in completing our work. So again, speaks to the work you guys do and the city does to make sure that everything is in tip-top shape for us to kind of come in, be a whirlwind, and then kind of issue our reports at the end. So with that, that concludes my remarks. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malott. Members of the council with questions or comments about it? If not, thank you very much for your presentation.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Next, we'll go to a discussion regarding current item B and the water report, which our city manager, Mr. Jurgens, will open with.
Thank you again, Mayor. For the last item on our agenda, we have a couple of action items related to some water improvements. We thought we would take this time for the staff from Water and our Deputy City Manager, Sue McLaughlin, to give an update just on the water quality that we're seeing and the chemical levels, and just provide the community with a general update. And then obviously, staff can answer any questions that you may have regarding the specific items as well. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Brett Lucian from our Water Department. Brett?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Manager and Council. We're just gonna try not be too long this evening. We're gonna have one slide that we'll kind of go over this evening. So to kind of talk about taste and odor issues that we've been having at both of our reservoirs. Right now, Evergreen, we're actually sitting at 9.5. For Jocelyn and for MIB, we're at 43. And our microcystis is at 2.4. Lake Bloomington, we're at 13 and 9.3 for MIB. And for microcystis, it is 1.8. For tap water, which actually is what we're delivering outside of our water treatment plant, for Jocelyn, we're at 2, MIB 3.1. And for MIB, or excuse me, for microcystis, it is 0.08, which is non-detect. Obviously, that magic number where people start tasting the compounds is around 10 for MIB. So obviously, we're way below that. Talk about lake levels, and I want to introduce Scott Joyce. Scott Joyce is our Purification Superintendent. So he manages our treatment at the water treatment plant. So I want to make sure that everybody knows who Scott is and who actually watches our lake levels and our taste and odor compounds. But as of the 7th year of November, Evergreen, we're at 716.8, which we're about 2.7 feet down. Bloomington, we're at 717, which is about 2.2 feet down. Last year, we were looking about this time. Evergreen was at 717.2, and Lake Bloomington was 715.08. Now, Scott does have a little bit more details about where we are today and where we were last year. Scott, you want to kind of, in like millions of gallons of water, where we sit at?
Sure. So yeah, the combined total between both the lakes, we are looking at 141 million gallons more than we were on this day last year. So at the 9 million gallons a day that we're currently pulling off the lake, that's around 16 days. But if you look at Lake Bloomington, which is where we're pumping off primarily right now, we're looking at 305 million gallons more than we were at this time last year. So that's around 34 days at the 9 million gallons a day. So the plan is to keep using Lake Bloomington. And like last year, Lake Bloomington has a lot better numbers as far as the taste and odor compounds. So hopefully, we can lean on that. And rain will obviously be what really drives our plan going forward. We'll watch November and see where we're at. November of 2024, we had 3.79 inches of rain. So we're not there at this point this year. So that's something to watch going forward. But, you know, that'll help drive our strategy going into the winter.
One more thing to add to on Evergreen Lake. We did treat it on October 30th and 31st with the algicide. Normally, that takes about seven to 10 days for us to actually see results back from what that treatment did. But we're hoping to see much better results and stuff like that as we get those tests back. So, City Manager?
If I could just also add, we also replaced several of the filters today, correct? And the council, I believe, approved the purchase of those and replacement of those filters. And it's not just like replacing your filter at your AC unit at your house. It's a big deal and it's expensive, but that also is hopefully going to lower some of these numbers as well. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, City Manager.
Members of the council with questions? Member Mosley?
Yeah, I have a question, and I appreciate you guys coming in and talking about this. And my question to you, because I know you talk about our strategies, right, to maintain. And the reason I'm asking this question is because publicly, I don't want people to think that you're not looking out and exploring future state or where we need to be when you forecast the numbers. But are there any strategic views that we look at? What are other alternative sources of water that could be considered rather than, like you said, our reliance on Lake Bloomington? And if it gets too low, will we fail over to Lake Evergreen? And Bloomington is normally historically better. Are there other options that we can consider long-term?
Yes, long-term, obviously, there is other options out there. We are looking at those, and we are going to be looking at getting some consultants on board to kind of help us kind of look at that next future state of trying to provide good, adequate water for our citizens. Very good question.
Member Motney?
Sure. As you went over these taste and odor comments, could you put those in the context of the trends over the last, say, six to 12 months? As opposed to just this, you know, few days snapshot?
I don't have the six months in front of me, but I've got a few. I can kind of generalize. I've got a month here. But we looked, we've been down in the single digits now for a while. Just going back, we're doing two tests a week now. And I'm gonna focus on MIB, Jocelyn. We've always had a really good removal efficiency on Jocelyn. And we report two, but our test, that's the lowest result we can get back with the test. So it should be two or below, but we just write two because we can't know for sure. So if I focus on MIB, we look at 3.16, 4, 2.6, 3.1 are all the most recent tests. And I don't have in front of me the test previous to that, but we've been trending down and below 10 for a while now. And if you want that in more detail, I can get that and provide that to you. But as of right now, I did not bring the entire list with me.
So as folks who aren't experts in water management here, what could we take away or should we take away from your observations over those few readings that you've shared?
That we are on the right track. The PAC is really doing a really good job. We are still feeding a very small dose. When we had the higher numbers in the spring, we were throwing like 17,000 pounds a week of PAC at the taste and odor compounds. We're still feeding a little bit of PAC, around 8,000 pounds a week right now. And I plan to dial that back even more, just because I think that trying to be efficient with the PAC. But I want to feed a little bit of a baseline, because like City Manager Jeff Jurgens said, that we are, we got the filters replaced, we're working on that right now, that let's use the expendable filter media, if we want to call the PAC, that we'll use that to take, you know, the heavy lifting on the taste and odor compounds. And that's clarified in our clarifiers and taken away. And then the filters then will provide the cleanup at the end. But to go back to what you said as far as covering what I could tell the public about this is that we are well below the taste and odor threshold. It's around 10, and we've been there for a while. And I think with the PAC, that we will continue to stay under that 10 unless we get hit with a really high raw water taste and odor MIB number that will. I mean, and we'll see in the future, because I think there are a few things that we can do to treat better.
Thank you, Scott.
Other members with questions or comments? In regards to the equipment, the recently purchased equipment for quantitating and doing some of these tests in-house, what's the status of that?
So we had Agilent. That's the company that we got the equipment from. They were out. We had a representative from Agilent out at the plant last week for three days. And our lab supervisor and our lab tech were there for the training the entire time. And today, they ran their first sample. It took, they ran a standard, so they put, they artificially dosed water with the MIB and the Jocelyn. So they have five of those standards that they run, as well as then the three, LBEL, Lake Evergreen, and the TP01. And that test took like five and a half hours, so they didn't get a chance to analyze the results on their equipment. But that's, they're lined up to do that on Wednesday for our in-house testing.
So the in-house testing goes on till you get the equipment totally fine-tuned the way you need, if I understand this correctly. And we're gaining on that because this council made an investment last year, significant investment of this equipment, to have testing done in-house. So we're not going over to, I think, Indiana as often. And so we're on the right track for that. And once we get to that, the in-house quantitating of the levels, where some of the levels you're talking about here tonight, can be done and results can be quicker for you and for all of us.
That's correct, yeah. They should be same day instead of, the turnaround is, you know, three or four days now at best. So yeah, we should go from that to, and once, the test will actually be a lot faster when we're not setting up the standards to run as well. If we're just doing the three samples, it would go through a lot quicker.
Thank you very much. Any other members that have questions or comment? Member Lee?
Yeah, we also purchased the new PAC system. Is that on schedule for it to be delivered and installed?
Yeah, so actually, that is still scheduled to be delivered end of January, February. The item, the action item that you guys are taking action on this evening is actually for the foundation for that and also a building to actually for the foundation for that and also a building to house some of the equipment for the PAC system. So yeah, um, back in March, the council approved to purchase the PAC system from Chemco. And, um, the item for tonight is to do the foundation and also the, um, equipment building and so forth. So yeah, we are still on track to get the permanent PAC system, um, in place after the first of the year.
Okay, thank you. That's, um, good news.
Yeah, very good news.
Any other members? If not, I'm sorry, member Ward.
No, I was just going to move approval of these two items.
Seconded. There's a member, uh, seconded. We have four items that we're actually loading in, we're taking them as an entire package, right? So the, um, motion has been made by member, uh, Ward and seconded by member Strazza. And Madam Clerk, if you'd take the vote.
The item passes, no nays to announce.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Um, I believe that's all the items for action on the agenda. Um, member, excuse me, city manager Jurgens, I'd like to have your report.
Yes, thank you very much. Just a, a few items tonight that'll go through quickly. If you could go to the next slide. Uh, just a, a quick update on the, uh, streetscape project that's in the six hundredth, uh, six hundred North Block of, uh, Main Street in our downtown. The ring structure, originally we thought it was going to be completed by the end of this week. There was a little bit of delay, but they are making progress on it. And, uh, so you're going to start to see some of the actual poles and, and structure go up this week and it should be completed next week. So that project continues to move along very well. They've started with the brickwork and, uh, they are just out there on site every day going at it. So really appreciate all of their work. Next slide. I had a, a few, a couple of really busy weekends at the arena and the BCPA over the last couple of weekends, uh, with some big events and some large crowds. The one thing I wanted to point out, and I talked about this, uh, a few meetings ago, was the increase we're seeing in the per cap, uh, how much concessions we are selling at these events. And for the first seven events, our per cap rate is up thirty-two percent. Um, so those are fantastic numbers. It's not by accident. Uh, our team, Billy Tyus Deputy, Senior Deputy City Manager and Anthony Nelson, the Director and all of their staff have worked so hard on this and we are extremely proud at the progress they're making. The grab and go type facility that they, they basically created this within the arena has been extremely popular. Um, and I think they're looking at trying to do that on the other side of the, uh, arena as well. So if that continues to go well, we'll continue to monitor it, but we're really excited to see those results. Next slide. Leaf collection is now underway. If you have any questions, go to our website, bloomingtonillinois.gov, uh, backward slash leaves. It's also the main thing on our website. It'll show you do's and don'ts. Uh, bring all the leaves up to the curb. Do not put the leaves on the street. Do not cover them over inlets. Uh, do not mix them with sticks or other things and do not pile them more than three feet and, and they'll come and they'll get your leaves and, and you won't, you don't bag them or anything else. But if you have questions, if you want to see the map as to where we are, all of that information is on our website along with frequently asked questions. Next slide. Next week, we will not have our regularly scheduled committee of the whole. Instead, we will have a kind of a short council retreat that'll be over at the Bloomington Library where we will talk about, uh, some, setting some priorities and planning and next steps on some of the items that we've been working on. And then finally, two more quick slides. Uh, just a reminder that our farmers markets have moved to once a month now that it's gotten a little colder outside. The next one will be our Thanksgiving market on November twenty-second. It will be held inside the arena. Then I think in December it skips over and goes into the BCPA if I'm correct. So watch out for those, but we have actually added, I think we're now up to ninety-four vendors, they said. I, it's the highest we've ever had, uh, so really seeing some, uh, good turnout at our farmers markets. And then finally, uh, just a reminder and a happy Veterans Day to everybody, uh, all of our veterans. Tomorrow our offices, city offices will be closed in, uh, in honor of Veterans Day. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, uh, city manager and members of the council. Member Scott?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, talk about, uh, the Community Policing Academy that, uh, some of us took advantage of. Um, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Hendricks and myself and some other folks, other leaders were invited to do really a deep dive, um, for six Wednesdays into, uh, the inner workings of, of our BPD. And I was, I was genuinely blown away by the culture of respect and empathy, uh, that exists in, in our department, which, what's being worked for. And I could go on and on and on, but I'll do a couple, a couple of highlights. I learned that, uh, every BPD member completes eight hours of de-escalation training focused on respect and empathy. Uh, a wonderful presentation from our school resource officers emphasizing the relationship building that they do and restorative justice over, say, um, cycling through street officers, um, or, or any sort of focus on, on arresting, uh, kids and students. Uh, families with loved one on the autism spectrum or with special needs can notify the department in advance so that officers are prepared to respond appropriately if called to their home. Um, and one story too that was shared, um, uh, during the protests, um, of the death of Sonia Massey in Springfield, um, local, uh, NAACP representatives went there as well, um, and made comment about the difference between, um, other communities and our area. And, um, certainly can understand cynicism in, uh, saying, well, did it, did a cop tell you that? And the answer is yes, but I confirmed it with, um, President Foster of the NAACP. So, um, and I can understand certainly of healthy cynicism and questions. This is not a group, um, that, that, um, fades from challenging questions. And so I'll, I'll put a shout out for Custard with a Cop, um, this, uh, on the eighteenth at Culvers on Hershey's, um, to bring your questions and, and folks, folks will listen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, member Lee, any comments? Report? No? It's just me ringing. All right. Member Ward?
Yeah, I just want to, to piggyback on to what council member Scott had to say. I also went through the, the, um, same program that she did and found it to be really edifying and, and enlightening. I would echo all the things that she said and would simply add to that, that to me, this, this project of the community engagement unit, um, while it was, it is, it is something that, that all the different areas of the police department had a strong presence in. To me, this underscores the need for the community engagement unit and, and this kind of program. And I would highly recommend it to anybody. I learned a lot and, and I think that, that other members of the community could also learn a lot. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Member Currents, any comments? Report. Member Mosley? Member Motney?
Yes, just wanted to give a couple of thanks, um, to two different areas in the area of continuous improvement and the results being achieved. So first acknowledging and reiterating the comments you made about the arena. Um, and it is, it is clear that the logistics management of the arena has dramatically improved in the last, um, twelve to eighteen months. And I want to thank you and your staff for your commitment to continuous improvement and making all of those rapid improvements that are making a difference also in the city's receipts. So thank you very much. So not just customer experience, but it's also improving, um, the related revenue. So thank you. And likewise, um, my notes from council four years ago this week about leaves, um, it was remarkable how many, um, things were going on in that area that really was making it challenging for our residents and also creating additional risk for the city in terms of the inlets and things of that nature. Um, Mo seems, and his staff seem to have really embraced continuous improvement and applying concepts like, um, flow to their work. And I think it has been, uh, felt by the residents, not only in the timeliness of the bulk pickup, but also, um, the work that's being done right now. So thank you to your staff for embracing continuous improvement and implying what they're learning along the way. Thank you.
Member Danenberg?
All good. Word for, sir.
Good. Thank you for reporting in. Member Strazza?
Yes, a couple of things. Uh, first I wanted to say thanks to the fire department. I got to enjoy, uh, to see an experience of eight hours of, with them on Friday night, this past Friday. Uh, the amount of things they do in that short time I was there, it was amazing. I'm glad, again, we voted for the twenty-four seventy-two, uh, knowing how much they put in, what it does to, uh, to them, to their families. Um, it was just, uh, we were moving the whole time. There was call after call after call from four o'clock on to almost midnight. Um, and that was, I was a sort of a small window and they were still had to finish up till seven AM. So, uh, very impressed, uh, just very thankful for, for that team, um, in station one. I'm going to plan on going to see the other stations. We just didn't have time to get to the other stations that night just because we were so busy. Uh, but it was, it was a, a good experience, uh, very, they were very open and very, uh, willing to share things and willing for me to ask questions. So I was excited for that. Uh, one last thing, uh, I just want to say for city staff, uh, just in the last couple of weeks, again, I'm very, been very impressed with the, uh, response, uh, from, um, everybody just when I have questions or when I've had a lot of, I had a variety of different people in the community have asked me, can you help me with this? What's going on with this? And, um, the response they're getting back, they're very, been very happy with the response and is surprised how quickly it is being answered and to a point where they feel satisfied for what they were getting. So thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Also, um, Chief, uh, Seminton is in back and Chief has, um, some interns that I think are just wrapping up. If you'd like to come forward and introduce your interns and let us give them a round of applause for the work they've done. I believe we have one from Illinois State, two from Illinois State, and one from Illinois Wesleyan. So we got Redbirds and Titans here. Chief?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity and, uh, for the, the photo shoot, uh, of course. We are, um, experiencing a great relationship with the Illinois State University and Illinois Wesleyan University when it comes to our internship program. We're very excited for that partnership. Tonight I have with me Ismael Kadish. Yasmina Davaya, the, the, my apologies, and then Christian Alamanza. Each of these interns completed, um, a couple of months with us. They did ride-alongs and participated in other e, events and activities with the police department. And I know we were going to have at least two applicants, um, of age and ready, um, once they finished their education. And then, uh, we'll, we'll see about the, the third, she's a sophomore, but, uh, we certainly appreciate this opportunity.
And then I think I have a couple of brief comments with a couple of slides. If you'd put those forward for me, please. And one of those was the, um, at the Bloomington Library recently, we, uh, I was part of, as well as others, uh, Indian Day and, um, enjoyed very much not only how, uh, the entire program was, but how versatile the library was to, to be able to accommodate on a number of fronts in regards to this, uh, celebration, uh, for our Indian community. Um, next slide, I think you can just kind of see from that, we had a great ribbon cutting at the, at Stevenson School for the new playground, uh, the sensory, uh, specialized playground, which, uh, is obviously after the school hours, open to the community of, of not only those, uh, in that area, but around that may have, uh, individual family members that, uh, have special needs and that playground can certainly play a vital role in the therapy and help and, and fun outing, uh, for those type of individuals. So through District eighty-seven and the city, we're very, we're very glad and proud that we were able to be a small portion of that. It turned out, turned out great. One of us ran the New York City Marathon and it was not me. Uh, and it was not anybody other than our own, uh, Mike Strazza, uh, member Strazza. So I think, uh, um, I don't know what the time was and all. If you want to comment on anything, you, you're looking at it, twelve oh one, there it is right there, twelve oh one. And look at that, it's lightning, uh, like Lightning Strazza right there moving next to the statue, Statue of Liberty. I don't know what could be any better than that. But, uh, congratulations to you, Mike, and from all of us here in the council. Let's give them a nice round of applause. Thank you. And with that, um, I appreciate the opportunity for council members to join in tonight, some of the discussions. And Mike, to your point of the fire department, uh, I did the same. Uh, it was, is quite the experience. And with the police department some time ago, I am in, um, the, I guess, criteria to meet with, uh, public works on. So if I'm out picking up your leaves, uh, in the near future, uh, just give me a wave and don't say anything else. With that, I think that's all we have unless there's something else to come before council tonight. Appreciate it. And then I will need a motion and a second to adjourn.
A motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
We have, um, member Motney and member Ward for the second. All in favor? Thank you. Have a nice evening, ladies and gentlemen.